Sort of the airing of grievances? No. All right. Then we will move on to new business. Case number 11-3500001, the special use for the AT&amp;T wireless communication facility. I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe an applicant or representative is here yet. And so I would like to suggest to you perhaps if we could delay this item till later in the meeting and take the other item first.
Any objections? Okay. All right. Thanks, Joe. Then we will go to case 09-200-0001 and case 09-630-0003, the Centerra PAD amendment. And I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from this item. With my previous employer, I had, he represented the applicant and I actually worked on this case, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The site is the designated 32-acre commercial parcel within the overall Centerra PAD at the southeast corner of Estrella Parkway and Van Buren Street. We have existing commercial centers to the north, the Centerra single-family neighborhood to the east, and undeveloped land zone AU to the west. The PAD amendment is to allow approximately 340 multifamily residential units along with the standard commercial uses that the parcel is currently designated for. The project will be known as Centerra Cross. The applicant is also seeking approval of design guidelines establishing the architectural character of both the residential and the commercial buildings. A comprehensive sign package is not included at this time. The PAD development plan, this document here submitted with the amendment depicts a mix of two-story and three-story multifamily buildings on the east half of the site with entrances off of Centerra and Van Buren. Centerra Drive being down here at the south side of the property. The plan also depicts garages together with a mix of covered and uncovered parking spaces near the east property line. A 30-foot landscape buffer is depicted between those garages and parking spaces and the east property line. On the west half of the property, the plan depicts a mix of retail shops, restaurant space, a convenience store with gas sales, and a drive-through bank. The commercial pads will have shared access off of Estrella and Van Buren as well as shared access off of the north-south spine road that runs through the site from Centerra to Van Buren. The multifamily will also have some interior connections to that north-south spine road. The details of the multifamily development and the commercial pads will be further refined through the site plan approval process and the construction plan approval process. The site is within the city center gateway overlay district, and the applicant has complied with the provisions of the district through site layout, landscape architecture, pedestrian amenities and connections, and building architecture. The overall architectural style of Centerra crossings is a clean and contemporary southwest look established through the use of a refined color, a material palette, along with building elements with clean edges and forms. The design of the commercial buildings and the residential buildings are not identical, yet they are connected through the use of complementary materials and colors. The request to amend the PAD is in keeping with the general plan, high-intensity mixed-use corridor overlay, the city center gateway overlay, and staff is recommending approval of the PAD amendment and the design guidelines subject to 22 stipulations of approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and of course, the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Do we, any commissioner have questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Schlosser. No, no, okay. You mentioned that the sign package was not included. Is that, will that come before us at a later time, or is that something that's going to be dealt with on staff?
It will come before you at a later time if they choose to do anything beyond what is in the standard ordinance allowances. In all likelihood, they'll have some limitations.
You don't say.
Just a thought.
All right. Thank you. The applicant is here and I'm sure really wishing to speak. So please step to the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Anthony Sumner. I'm with Sandbox Development, 312 West Edgemont in Phoenix. I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. I'd also like to thank staff. Karen and Joe particularly have done quite a bit of work on this project, getting it to where it is and then helping us pick it back up and continue it on to this point. So I want to thank staff for all their time and their commitment. I'd like to just focus on the core request as part of the PAD amendment portion of the project is to add the multifamily component to the PAD, to the existing underlying zoning of C2. We feel that that will be a benefit to the project in a number of ways. It will help support a more vibrant city center by adding the mixed uses to this corridor. It'll help support the retail and the recreation uses that are key to the corridor and to the city center itself, and also to the ballparks, and the future development that we're hoping will come soon with the universities and remaining city center opportunities. I will also add the housing stock diversity that many residents will be looking for now as homeownership has become, you know, a much bigger challenge in this economy, and also as people are looking for more of a lifestyle change in a more urban environment, that they would like to have more amenities at hand with a lock-and-leap lifestyle. So we feel that adding the multifamily uses will be very successful in this area. The project will be amenitized with pools and clubhouses and pedestrian trails within the multifamily that will promote pedestrian connectivity to the retail uses as well as the corridor itself. As Karen mentioned, it's in conformance with the design guidelines and the city center gateway overlay district. We've worked closely with staff. We attended the citizen review committee. We're working closely with the neighbors to try and address any potential concerns that they might have, and we look forward to working with them, you know, through this process and through site planning and other approvals that are necessary in order to help bring this project to fruition. And we're excited to bring a quality project to the city core, promote more sales tax and jobs for the city of Goodyear. So with that, I'll go ahead and close my presentation at this point. If there are any additional questions or would like some additional detail on any elements, I'll be here to help address those for you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I guess my first question is, do you have a user in tow? What's the reason for wanting to change it from the commercial to the multifamily? Do you have a multifamily user that you're working with?
The primary, the primary reason, to answer the question, we do not have a user in tow today. The primary reason is that the original proposal included was all commercial and included some office condo, some apartments, and hotel use. We've since revised that to remove the hotel and the office condo because, looking at the market, those are not really feasible at this time. And in this location, we feel that the best chance for success will be to provide the multifamily residential in conjunction with the retail and shops that we've proposed. And as far as the commercial real estate market goes, the multifamily residential is by far the best performer, and we're seeing quite a bit more interest now in developing multifamily developments, and vacancy rates have been declining quite a bit. So it's kind of the shining star of this, you know, depressed real estate market. A multifamily really is a standout, and we think that is the best chance to bring a user in as quickly as possible and help get some of the synergy going, and it will also help support the other proposed uses within the commercial property.
Okay. I guess one other thing that comes to mind, there's apartments to the south of this property. Do you know what the occupancy rate is?
I believe, and I'll maybe defer to my clients, but I believe you went there and they're at about 75, 78 percent, which in this market is pretty good.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Schlosser, the last time we did a vacancy survey of the apartments, and it's probably been several months, we do that in order to do our own projections of vacancy and population and such. And surprisingly enough, those apartments were running about 80 percent. We had suspected that it would be higher, or a higher vacancy rate than that, but it wasn't. So that, so his response is consistent with what you found at that time.
Okay, thank you. I may have a couple others, but all the other commissioners?
Yeah, I just sort of like to follow up on that because I seem to recall within the last year, there was another multifamily project that was proposed within the city. And I believe it was poo-pooed, for lack of a better term, because of the large number of apartment complexes in the area and substantial vacancy rates. So I am curious as to, you know, within the last year, it would seem striking that circumstances have changed in such a short period of time. And, you know, I don't know, it's one over a lifetime. I don't know if that's, you know, more appropriate for staff, but...
Well, I can speak to this project specifically. One, we wouldn't be requesting the change if we didn't feel very confident that it would be the best thing for the project to make it most successful. And second, it really will suit this location well because it is in the city center overlay district, and we feel that that will provide the other amenities that these multifamily tenants will be looking for, close proximity to retail shops, recreation facilities, the opportunity to perhaps walk or bike to things other than drive. So we feel that that location is key. That's one reason why we feel the vacancy rates are decent at the nearby places, maybe as relative to other areas around town. It lends itself very nicely as far as amenities and access for transportation. So we feel very confident this is, this is a good use for the project from a, from a planning perspective and an economic perspective.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm somewhat surprised that, you know, being so close to the ballpark, you know, what the future, you know, of that and as development increases, that the hotel, you know, would not, and again, the condo isn't going to be, you know, sort of a sustainable or, you know, lucrative venture, you know, along the same lines that you're, you know, indicating now. That's more rhetorical.
Mr. Chairman, I think?
I'm not sure to address the question too, but I noticed that the engineering department raised some issues about wastewater capacity. Could you walk me through, you know, let's say there's a sit-down later on and it's determined that there is a need for additional capacity and that this project doesn't, you know, puts us over capacity. What happens then? Is it just more money that we need to, you know, spend on additional facilities and who pays for that?
Chairman of the Laws, Commissioner Peters, that's a detail that ends up being worked out at the time we go through site plan approval. They're required to provide us with water and sewer master plan reports for the project, and if there is a capacity issue at that time, then we enter into negotiations as to how to address it.
Mr. Chairman, is the capacity built on what, are the projections built on what we currently, what's zoned currently along that corridor and for that, or, you know, and so all these changes would affect, you know, what they're, what they're looking at? So it's kind of a standard concern that they may raise whenever we have changes like this?
Chairman of the Laws, Commissioner Peters, that's correct. The IWMP, which is Integrated Water Master Plan, developed calculations for water and wastewater capacity based on certain assumptions, land use assumptions. And so when a land use changes, that is a concern that they typically raise. I'm not sure they're saying they know that it is a problem at this point, that just, they've raised that it has a potential problem that would need to be addressed as the project would, if the project moves through to further approval process.
Thank you.
If it would please the commission, I could speak in a little bit more detail to that as I did have some conversations with engineering staff today as I had the same concern about that and how it would impact our project. There's, there's two issues at hand. One is capacity in the sewer lines, so there's capacity at the plant. And from my conversations with engineering today, the capacity at the plant is a citywide issue. It's, you know, we're reaching, you know, a certain percentage of capacity, and it's going to trigger future expansions. The comment related to the line capacity was more specific to this locale, and it was specifically regarding Estrella Parkway and the connection at Yuma Road. Our sewer plan currently takes sewer in two directions. One is the northern half of our project, sewers north to Van Buren, and then east towards Bullard, and the southern half of our project sewers south into Centerra Drive and then east as well. So my concern was, are we contributing to that bottleneck or not? So where we left off with staff is that they're going to review our preliminary sewer report. From what it looks like, everything is searing to the east and not hitting that bottleneck at Yuma Road and Estrella Parkway. So our intent would be to send, according to the stipulation as well, would be to send as much possible to the north and to the east to not impact the capacity of the line in Estrella Parkway, and we're, we're planning on doing so.
Thanks. All right, any other questions for the applicant?
No. Just, I was reading the concerns of the police in terms of the garages, but that was already addressed.
Yes, that's correct.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. I think it's been a year or so ago, this property was before us, when we approved a gas station on Estrella. I was just curious what the status of that was.
I guess that did come before you as a special use permit for the fuel station. It's, it was good for one year, and it just recently, that special use permit just expired in May of this year. So at this time, we're not applying for a special use permit. When, when we have a user in tow, the project will come before you again for these special use permit requests and the expanded review for the gateway overlay district.
The reason for my question is the same as for this, this new proposed use for the multifamily. For the record, I'm not against, I'm actually, I think it's a good proposed land use, but my concern is, and the reason for the gas station question, is the same, and that's why I asked the first question about whether or not you have a user in tow, that, you know, we keep, keep coming back and coming back and, and a year from now, the multifamily thing doesn't work and, and we try something else again. So I guess that's the reason for all my questions and for the, the occupancy rate.
Sure, no, understood.
Can I ask you something? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, go for it.
My name's Alex Kurian from DNG. We are actually capable of developing that site ourselves. We, I mean, we have the funds to do it. We're just waiting for the market to come back, so we will be capable of doing it. We have the contractors in place, just to let you know. For the gas user, you know, we, we were looking to sell the gas station, but as a multifamily, we, we're actually currently developing a couple of sites in Los Angeles as well, so.
Like I said, I think it's a legitimate concern that I have.
Of course.
Go ahead, sorry.
That's right.
To that point, we're talking about, you think the market currently will support with all these, you know, vacancy rates and occupancy rates, and you're ready to build as soon as the market comes back. So what exactly, when is that point? You know, is it an average occupancy rate of 85 percent, 90 percent? I mean...
I mean, we're, we're kind of feeling out the market. I mean, just like how the city center hasn't been built yet, or the mall hasn't been built yet. I think everybody's kind of feeling out where the market is. So, I mean, we're in the same position. I mean, we feel very comfortable with the location as multifamily. We will develop the site as a multifamily. We're capable of developing the site as a multifamily, and when the market comes back, we'll pull the trigger on it.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, I have one member of the public wishes to speak, Jim McLaughlin. Come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim McLaughlin. I live at 182 North 153rd Avenue in Goodyear, which is directly behind this, this property that is before you tonight. This is, you remember, has stated, this is the second time that this has come up, when it was a rezone for the commercial use, which we were assured when we purchased property in that area, it was going to be commercial. And now, all of a sudden, we have multifamily homes going in or apartments. These, the structures, if you look at their plans, it's going to impact us greatly, especially every home along the west side. I've, I heard the questions come up regarding the impact on water and sewage. We have a low water flow now in that area. Unless something's going to be done with more wells or more water coming in, we're going to have an even worse problem. I have water pressure in the morning that's great, but by 10 o'clock, I, I don't have it. It's gone. The multifamily homes or apartments, they're going to need more water than a single dwelling My questions were, I discussed it with the developers here, as some of the things on the, the way they were laying out the driveways, the way that they were putting in the, the garages, it's going to greatly impact everyone in that area. If you put in a two-three, two-story home that's facing the rear of another property with the single-family homes, those people in the second, third story are going to have direct view into everything that happens in that entire area. I had no problems with this being zoned for commercial. I have a problem with it being zoned as a multifamily usage. I don't think this is what we were looking for in when we purchased in this area and our expectations of Goodyear, what they were going to do to maintain it. If you look at the property down near the apartments, you have I don't know how many units of commercial buildings there. There's never, never, ever been one of them occupied. Never, it has never been leased, never been rented. Your apartments, which is a part of the Centerra Homeowners Association, which I am the treasurer, by the way, I didn't mention that, it's a part of it. Yeah, I know what the, the occupancy, occupancy rate is there, and it's about 70 to 75 percent. If you put in more apartments there, it's going to affect everything. Centerra was not built to have the traffic that they're saying that they're going to generate. I, I, it's, it's not going to be enough for everyone. So this, this is my concern. They're talking about how they're going to tear up or re-landscape. That means they're going to make Centerra a Estrella Parkway. It's going to be faster. It's, it's just going to be a traffic nightmare for the people in, in the area that live there. Most of the homeowners that are concerned do not willing to take the time to come down here, and I thank you for listening to me.
Mr. McLaughlin? Although your alternative was a, probably a multi-story hotel also looking in your backyard.
Yes, well, the hotel, the way it was set up originally, with the zoning before and how it was planned, the hotel would have worked out much better for us. We would not have been pleased with it, but understanding our business, we would much rather have a motel, hotel, bank than to have 320 apartments.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. McLaughlin? Again, we appreciate you taking the time to be down here and speaking tonight. All right, any other commission comments?
I have a, Mr. Chairman, a question for staff. If, like in the gas station situation, this gets approved through council, and a year goes by and they don't go further in the development process, what is the process at that time? Say it's two years from now. If they decide to build two years from now or they have a multifamily user, what's, what's that process? Is it a simpler process or, or?
If they don't build?
If they don't build, how do, how does it get reinstated or reapproved?
Well, the multifamily would become part of the zoning on the property. The overall PAD zoning would have a commercial component and a multifamily component, and that would continue on with the property. There is a possibility, and it's been done in the past, where councils impose stipulations that if you don't utilize your approvals within two years, it could be considered for being taken away, but that hasn't been done. What we do have is further on down the road, as you go through the site plan approval process, there are time limitations on that, 180 days, and then another 180 days if requested. So there are timeframes further on that you have to adhere to and utilize your approvals, but the zoning is, is in all likelihood going to stay in place if council approves it.
Thank you.
I have a concern. Every, it just seems, and I understand it's, there's a downturn in the economy and that it's going to bounce back eventually, but it just seems that every time there's a downturn in the economy, it's the little people, the little neighborhoods that get the negative impact of it. And we are constantly changing and amending to help businesses, which I have not, there's no problem with helping businesses. But at some point, I can imagine if they had decided to do that in my neighborhood, how I would feel. I would not be a happy camper. So I, you know, at some point, the people who, who have been there, who have been paying their taxes, they need to have their voices heard as well as the big businesses.
Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions? Then I will close the public hearing.
Please. And thank you, and I'll be brief as I know you want to, to move on. So I would like to just reiterate the fact that we did meet with Mr. McLaughlin at the citizen review meeting, and he did outline several very legitimate concerns, particularly as he does live directly behind the development. And when we developed a site plan for the site, we took that into account and we... and we put a huge buffer along the adjacent eastern boundary. It's a thirty-foot landscape buffer with staggered rows of trees. There's an existing eight-foot wall. In addition to that, we put the drive aisle for the circulation on that side and the closest building will be over a hundred feet away from the property line. Then we've also limited the height of those buildings to two stories. So the only three-story buildings have to be beyond that and they'll be internal to the property. So with that, we've, there's a line of sight diagram in your, in your booklets and I'll put it up here. But I would like to call out that we've really tried to put our best foot forward as far as visibility from the apartments looking down into people's rear yards. And as you can see by the line of sight, if someone's on, you know, a second-story balcony and they're looking down where there are rows of garages, the line of sight, if someone's, you know, five foot eight, standing there looking, they're going to see the garage first and foremost. If there's not a garage, then they're going to come down and the line of sight will be blocked by the eight-foot wall. And the average distance from the homes is about thirty feet and that's going to put them at about six foot eight. So they're going to be seeing the very top or fascia board of a house. So they're not going to be looking right down into the rear yard. So they're not going to be able to see into swimming pools or anything like that. And I know it takes time for trees to grow, but the trees will grow very quickly with the irrigation system and in a few years, the trees are going to be what you see. You won't be able to see anything beyond that. And, you know, if it's a two-story home, a two-story home can see over walls and, and over trees just as far in, in virtually any direction. We've limited the height of these buildings to be the same height that they would be if there was an office building there. So whether it goes commercial or office, the, the height limitations are comparable. And as, uh, the chairman mentioned, the, the hotel would be, obviously be much higher than that. So we have really tried to work closely with staff. We are very concerned about that as well. I personally back up to, uh, commercial uses and I don't have a hundred-foot buffer. So I've got rows and rows of trees and I really would like to have the buffer that we're proposing here. Regarding traffic, we have to do a traffic impact analysis, as you know, on every project. We had one prepared for the old site plan that had multifamily, office, hotel and all the retail. We had to update that on this resubmital. And by removing the hotel and the office and substituting, uh, the, the multifamily, which is what's currently shown here, we actually have a twenty-one percent reduction in the traffic volume. So as the general plan states, it's all commercial and the build-out of the arterial roadways and the regional transportation plan accounts for all commercial. The plan we propose is actually lowering that by twenty-one percent and that's in our traffic impact analysis, which has been prepared by a traffic engineer, reviewed by staff and approved by a city traffic engineer. Regarding water pressure, uh, we're going to have to meet or exceed the city standards, not just for drinking water and for taking showers, but also for fire flow. And that is a step above what it's going to take to have adequate fire flow protect or, uh, water supply to a home for, for showering, bathing, cooking and so forth. So when we move forward with development, we have to submit a site plan and actually install lines. We're going to have to pressure test those lines and we're going to have to meet, um, the fire department's requirements. That will be a standard above and beyond that of which, uh, the current system is. So as, as we develop the site, we're going to have to meet or exceed all the city expectations. I believe, uh, we, we did, uh, we did address, uh, the neighbors' concerns. We responded to each and every, uh, bullet point, uh, within a week of the meeting. And, uh, we have not heard back with any other, uh, comments other than tonight. Uh, I do want to reiterate though, we want to be a good neighbor and we're willing to work with the neighborhood, work with staff. Uh, there's been several, uh, stipulations that staff has recommended to address a lot of these concerns in the zoning case, which will be tied to the project and we'll have to adhere to those when we go to site plan. So, uh, with that, I respectfully request a favorable recommendation, subject to any stipulations that you would assess to the project. Thank you.
To the, uh, to the traffic point, um, and forgive me if I missed this in the report, but is there a traffic light planned at Centerra and Estrella or no?
There, uh, there is in the original traffic impact analysis that, uh, a forecast of a future signal, uh, when warranted. And when the traffic warrants that and we receive notice by the city engineer, the, the applicant will be responsible for twenty-five percent of that traffic signal when warranted or requested by the city.
Thank you.
Funny you should mention that. Harvey pointed out a mistake in one of my stipulations. Um, if we could, on stipulation eighteen, if we could at the end of that, where we talk about the traffic signal at Estrella Parkway in Centerra, can we add, would the proportionate share paid by the applicant pursuant to the existing Centerra PAD development agreement? And that is the development agreement that Mr. Sumner referred to. So if, if you're going to recommend approval, could you recommend it with that amendment? And then if there's any other stipulations that I could explain to you, I'd be happy to.
All right, any other questions? Comments, okay?
I have a comment.
I will reclose.
I have a comment.
By all means.
Um, I think that the applicant really did a very good job in explaining it. I also understand the concerns of the neighbors. However, I look out and I see two neighbors and I, and I applaud you for that. Um, if this is a major concern, they should be here. So if this goes on, if it's still a major concern and you did an excellent job in presenting your case, but they need to be here. That's it.
And to that point, I would recommend, uh, if there is, continues to be a concern, there's a council, you know, council meeting on this and so have the neighbors, you know, show up and participate. So there's other opportunities to, to weigh in.
Okay, I'm going to reclose the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind you that you have two cases in front of you that would, would benefit from separate motions. And then secondly, also to remind you that since you have four members present, uh, any motion to approve would require affirmative votes of all four members to be considered passed.
No pressure. No pressure.
Well, the advice is not only for your commission members, but also for the applicant in case they, uh, might want to consider a request for deferral, uh, depending on the motion.
All right, well, the public hearing has been closed. I will accept commission, uh, action, um, on each of, of the two cases. We'll start with case zero nine dash two zero zero dash zero 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 one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case zero nine dash two zero zero dash zero 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 one.
With the amended?
With the amended stipulation eighteen.
Thank you.
We'll call it the Karen stipulation.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Peters. I don't know if it's proper, um, for the chairman to second a motion or not. I forget parliamentary procedure.
Typically not.
Can I withdraw my motion and make a new one?
Without objection? Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I move to continue case zero nine two zero 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 one until the next meeting.
I second.
All right, you have heard the motion to continue case zero nine dash two zero zero dash zero 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 one to the August commission meeting.
Correct.
August seventeenth.
Okay, uh, I mean, I don't know what else we have, you know, planned for, for August and if that's going to throw a monkey wrench into, into that.
It's fine.
Okay, all right, you've heard a motion, um, and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, I presume that they will do a similar motion, um, for the following case. I'm not sure that makes much sense to, to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I move to continue case zero nine six three zero 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 three.
Motion?
To the August seventeenth meeting.
I second.
Got a second? All commission members in fa- in favor of continuing case zero nine dash six three zero dash zero 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 three to the August seventeenth commission meeting?
Aye.
Say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered? Thank you. Um, for, for the applicant, I, I think that under the circumstances, a continuance probably would be more favorable than, uh, recommending, uh, denial of, of your case, which it appears that's where it was headed. So, you know, we look forward to, um, seeing you next month. All right, uh, is the applicant here for?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for whatever reason, the applicant has not appeared. You have a choice of considering the, uh, application, recognizing that if there are questions that staff's unable to answer, then we would likewise probably recommend a postponement.
I will, you know, accede here to, to commission, um, on, you know, I, I appreciate that. I also, you know, there is a member of the public who, who came and wished to speak and I wanted to also, um, you know, allow that opportunity in, in case they can't come to the next.
In that case, I'd, I'd recommend go ahead and consider it, but just recognize that there's no one here from the applicant. And at this point, we don't know if there was a cross-up in communication or, or what, but, um, you always have the option to postpone it after taking testimony.
And, and I will ask, you know, um, Ms. Zednick if, you know, if, if that's something, if you're able to come next month and wanted to wait, um, to comment, that, that's great. Uh, um, if other, otherwise, um, you know, we can go ahead and consider it and then, you know, your comments will be made for the record. It's, it's.
Well, actually, it's just a couple of questions and I think the staff could answer. I think.
We can certainly try.
Um, well, then i- if, in that regard, I think what, what we will do then is we're going to go ahead and then postpone it to next month and then.
Oh, no.
No, let's take it.
No, we think we should do it.
No, let's just do it.
I don't know that it's appropriate without the applicant here to, to hear their case because we don't know what the outcome of the application's going to be.
Didn't you read it?
And I appreciate her being here and, and having the, to, to come back. But if she has questions for the, the staff, she can probably, they'll, they can answer questions. But how does the, if this application goes awry, how does the applicant defend themselves here?
Well, it's not a matter of attacking or anything. I just have a couple of questions. Why don't you field the questions? And then, um, if I do have anything negative to say, I will come back.
And we didn't want to, you know, put you on the spot or, or infer what, what you were trying to say. Um, you know, I, I, uh, you know, but again, I, I want to respect that, but I also want to respect the other commission members who want to go forward with the case.
I'm okay with moving forward. I mean, I've seen this, you know, several times in other cities where the applicant is not there. In some cases, it's their option to, to be present, um, possibly something happened. But I would say let's go ahead and at least hear the staff report, have some discussion. If there's any issue, then maybe we continue it, um, to give the applicant an opportunity to be here. But if we have all the information ready, I'd say we go with it.
I echo those comments.
I agree.
Okay, well, so be it then. We will, uh, move on to case one one dash three five zeros dash zero 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 one and I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. We have a special use for a wireless communication facility would be for AT&amp;T. Location is just south of the parking lot serving the Estrella Star Tower. So in this general vicinity right here, south of the parking lot, uh, west of Estrella Parkway. Uh, property is owned PAD, it's part of the Estrella Phase One PAD, which was zoned in nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, the PAD development plan shows this area for, uh, future custom home and golf course development. Uh, surrounding uses, uh, we do have the Star Tower facility, uh, mostly undeveloped land and to the east or southeast, there is a custom home subdivision with several custom homes within it. And this is kind of an overview of the site plan. Again, it shows the parking lot and the general location for the enclosure and the tower. There'll be an eight-foot wall enclosing all the equipment and that wall will be designed to match the Star Tower with, uh, the use of stone and the metal accents. And there is the enclosure and there is the tower. And here's an exhibit just showing what the tower and the walls, the gates will look like. The ta- tower will utilize a stealth design, a phosphoro cactus, uh, thirty feet in height, uh, two arms, the antenna, all the cabling is inside the cactus. And this is a photo simulation from Estrella Parkway, what that will look like, the enclosure and the cactus. We had a citizen review meeting on July seventh. Uh, no one from the public was in attendance at that meeting. With advertising for the citizen review meeting in this public hearing, uh, to date, staff has not received any comments on this project. We do find it compatible with the surrounding areas, especially utilizing the stealth design, the materials and finishes utilized with the Star Tower. Uh, we do not think it'll be a detriment to any of the uses in the area. As such, we are recommending approval, subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for staff?
I've got a couple. Um, and Steve, in the staff report, um, in the section that talks about the surrounding uses, uh, to the south and the west, you refer to undeveloped property in the Estrella PAD. Do you know what the land uses or the zoning designations are for those properties?
The land uses for this area, let's see. Well, most of the area to the west, to the south, it was a mix. They had, the bubbles were intertwined of golf course and custom homes.
Okay. Um, the other question I had was, we've seen monoparms, we've seen the pine trees. Have we seen a saguaro before? I haven't.
We have not in, in, in Goodyear yet. This will be the first.
All right. Do we know of anything like this in the valley that's been done?
The applicant mentioned, um, the one oh one in the northwest valley. There was one. I think there are two or three in, actually in, uh, the Rado community that, um, they have in their, by their golf course maintenance yard. There were two or three there. But otherwise, this would be the first for, for us.
And then my last question, um, if you want to go to the site plan exhibit, it was hard to read just because, um, it was such a small copy or reduction. But I think if I read it correctly, that there's going to be some sort of a mesh covering that goes over the entire walled area. It showed up on a little corner of the, of the walled area. Where kind of that crosshatching is. Kind of on the bottom left corner of the walled area. You see it? Yeah, right there. Does that mean that that's going to be a cover that goes over the entire area?
Yes, it is a cover. It is to shade the equipment, keep the sun off it.
Okay.
Uh, it is below the eight-foot wall, so there isn't anything that, the cover is not visible from above.
That was going to be my follow-up question, so thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant. No kidding. Jeez, I finally got everybody to laugh for once simultaneously. I forgot my question. No, I'm, I'm good. All right, my question was, sorry. Has anyone seen any of these anywhere? Are there any around town or?
He's too busy formulating his joke.
Comedy is about timing. That's why you have a day job? All right, thank you, Steve. Since the applicant is not here, um, Ms. Zednick, if you'd like to come up and ask your questions, please do so. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Okay, my name's Barbara Zednick. I live at one-eight-two-two-seven Santa Alberta. I live in Estrella. My questions are very simple. Um, one is, what color is this fossoirau? Because it's hard to tell from the pictures. Is it a metal color? Does it match the rust bucket, or what, what, uh? Is it green?
The proposal is for, it should be a green color. It's, it's designed to match fossoirau's as much as it can. I do not know the specific material that it is yet. I, that would be a good question for the applicant. What is specific material? But, the ones that I saw in Buckeye do look this nice, a shade of green that does match, and at first glance, it does look like a soro, just a little taller. And then, when you stare at it, it does then stand out a bit.
This picture that I have that's on the web, it's, it dwarfs the light post. I mean, it's quite large, thirty-foot, and the light post, it's kind of in front of it. Soro just dwarfs it. My other concern is, is it because of easements that it's this close, that it has to be this close, or can it be set further back into the parking area? I mean, to blend in more with the trees that are in the back there? In other words, can it be moved back, or is that an easement issue? Instead of, it's right out by the sidewalk. I mean, can it be moved back?
Again, that'd probably be a better question for the applicant, but from what they told us, the, the design is to take advantage of access. The technician can park right here. It's a short run for, uh, the utilities, electrical lines that they need. And it does provide, their, their intent is to cover Estrella Parkway and the existing homes to the southeast, so their, their response was this was the location that served those needs. I'm sure it could be pushed back, but then it would be less coverage, uh, uh, more, uh, more of an expense, so that would be a question that they would need to consider.
Because they still have the parking, so horseshoe parking. And it's, it's just so close to the road and the sidewalks, that it's thirty feet tall, you know? Just can you push it back to blend in more with the, I didn't know if that was an easement issue. That's. Do you don't see any objection to moving it back? The applicant would.
Yeah, right.
That reminds me, Mr. Chairman, I did have another question. Who owns the property? I know that this is a lease situation.
It is Newland, one of their groups that, that they have through Estrella.
Okay, uh.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to, to discuss this? Please come up to the podium, identify yourself, and then afterwards, if you wouldn't mind filling one of these out for me.
You bet. Uh, my name's Bill Zednick. I live in Estrella. I saw the plans, and, and I understand that, uh, there's certain, uh, restrictions due to economic situations. I'm worried about that. Uh, however, from just a, uh, a, a regular view of the street coming down Estrella Parkway with this thing so close to the, the curb area, it, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. It seems like if you were able to move it back about twenty feet, it would be, still be, uh, the same efficiency, and, and may cost you a couple more bucks to run the wires underneath, but, uh, it would sure look a lot better. Also, there's some vandalism that goes on, uh, quite often in the rust bucket area. Uh, there, there's been reports of that from the security system and security guards in Estrella. And, uh, with this thing that close, I wonder if we're gonna start having kids climbing over the walls and playing and swinging on this, uh, this soro, whatever it's made out of. Uh, my concern is that, uh, um, if, if in fact, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's good for AT&T to, uh, to put that in there, and it's necessary from a cell standpoint, it would be beneficial for everybody if we were to, uh, make it as inconspicuous as possible and keep it away from any possible problems that may occur, and also to blend in with the scenery around there.
That's it. Thanks, sir. You say your name for, for the record, please.
Kimberly Morgan, and I also live in Estrella Mountain Ranch. And my concern is also the appearance of it. Um, when you drive up the mountain to Estrella Mountain Ranch, you have this beautiful scenery in front of you, then you see the waterfall, and it's really nice. But then, if you have this thirty-foot tall fake soro right there, I think it will be, you know, it just cheapens the look when you first drive into the development. People, when you bring guests in, they're just like impressed. They're like, oh, man, this place is beautiful. You've got the mountains and the desert and the houses. It's just picturesque. But the soro that's thirty feet tall, it won't be blending in, and there's no thirty-foot tall soro's near it. And so, I also think that the location needs to be moved.
Thank you. Um, although I would like to say that your alternatives are probably sixty-five-foot monopalms or, you know, big cell towers that are aluminum, um, which may be even more unsightly. And unfortunately, the developer isn't, isn't here to, to defend themselves, um, and, and at least address, you know, movement issues. And, uh, you know, I, I mean, you know, I will, uh, I suppose I will, you know, put it out there for, um, you know, I'll close the public hearing, and then we can, you know, sort of decide on, you know, what your guys' struthers are as far as, you know, are you guys ready and prepared to vote for it tonight, or would you prefer to continue it, and so we can hear and have these questions answered by the applicant. So, with that, I will close the public hearing, and I will accept commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, continue case eleven dash three-five-zero dash zero-zero-zero-one to next month's meeting.
Okay, for the motion?
Thank you.
Got a second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor of continuing this case until the August seventeenth meeting? Please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So ordered. All right.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's a first. All right, well, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adj.